Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for September 18th, 2023. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters leading to the discipline of a pedagogical employee and to discuss matters made confidential under federal law and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act and to seek advice and counsel?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School Board meeting for September 18th, 2023. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence for armed forces and those in our community that have lost loved ones, especially the father of Catalina Tyndell, the mother of Teresa Comiso, the father of Daniel Satterelli, the sister of Niran McLeish, the father-in-law of Veronica Hildinger, the brother-in-law of Eileen McGannon, and the grandmother of Isabel Bradlin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as the foundation of the God invisible, liberating, just as for all.
Thank you all. We apologize for coming out late. We were with our attorneys and it couldn't be helped, so we will move on. Yvette, we're going to go right on to public comment number one, agenda-related items? Anybody? None? Okay, so we're going to go right into Ron's superintendent reports.
Okay, I am going to take the superintendent's report from the podium, so I may present on the two items that we have prepared for you this evening. It's wonderful to see you in the audience tonight, so thank you for being here and joining us. I have prepared a presentation for our board and for our community just to give you an overview of the start of our school year. There have been so many things that have happened since we last met. We last met on, or the Board of Education last met on August 28th, and since then, we've gotten our schools up and running. We have our pre-K program up and running, which is just such a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful feature in addition to our school district. And I wanted to just run through some important details as we start the school year, some of the things, obviously, that we'll be working on throughout the course of the school year, and introduce our pre-K program to our board and to our community formally. So I'll begin, obviously, with our district vision. That guides the work that we do here in Yorktown, and the vision speaks as true today as it did when we first wrote it as a team six years ago, more than six years ago at this point. Our Board of Education areas of focus continue to guide our work this year, and those are so important to us. Our enrollment numbers are on the screen. We have the camera on the screen now. Our enrollment is up from last year. Last year, we were just under 3,400 students. This year, we're just north of 3,400 students, so we continue to see enrollment increase. Crompond is at 530 students at this point, and that is just a remarkable number for Crompond. They have not seen that level of enrollment, I don't think, ever. If we look at grade-by-grade enrollment, I wanted the community to have this information as well, so we can see cohort size. We see a smaller senior class followed by a larger junior class, and then the cohorts are relatively stable. I did include, for the first time, pre-K on that list, and pre-K is not included in that previous number that I offered, 3,400-plus students. That does not include the pre-K numbers, and we'll speak more about our pre-K program momentarily. If anyone were interested in getting some more information about our enrollment, the breakdown by gender, by ethnicity, by free and reduced-price lunch, and any other information about enrollment, I included a link in this presentation that will access the New York State School Report Card for our school district. I just want to note that the data are from 2021-22. Generally, it's what's referred to as Bed's Day data, which happens in October each year, so we have Bed's Day coming up in just under a month, where we'll capture our enrollments, and that's what gets reported to the state. Transportation, we have approximately 2,800 children a day riding buses. Our buses are on the road for six hours a day. And what I will tell you is, they have done total transportation now for a student has done such a tremendous job for us in the district. However, their contract's coming to a close at the end of this school year. So one of the things that our administrative team, certainly in consultation and conjunction with the board, will be looking at is a RFP, a Request for Proposals for Transportation Providers. And some of the things that we're looking at is an eye toward the future with regard to the electric vehicle mandate that is going to be upon us in less, in about 10 years or so. Also cameras, having the buses outfitted with cameras and making sure that that's consistently applied across the fleet. And what I also want to share is, despite how good total transportation has been, there's a responsibility when you go through the bidding process. And we are required to go with the lowest responsible bidder for the specifications that we set forth in the RFP. So we're looking forward to seeing what that process brings, and we'll certainly be working tirelessly to make sure that we have bid specs that are something that we can be proud of for our district, that meets the needs of our school district. The relationship is great. We want to continue the relationship. The drivers are terrific, the monitors are terrific who work on our bus fleet, so we would love to continue that relationship, and we'll see where the bidding process brings us. And I anticipate we'll get that process underway in the winter, and that'll continue until the spring. Food service. We're in the final year of that contract as well, so we'll be bidding out food service as well. We've exhausted all possible extensions with our food service provider, and Aramark has been terrific. But more important than the name servicing the district are the people who work for Aramark, and they have been nothing short of spectacular, whether it's donating time and food for events that we have, specifically the Pioneer League Dinner Dance, or just the day-to-day interactions that they have with children. The staff in our cafeterias are remarkable. The management of our cafeterias are remarkable. I don't know many agencies that can say this, but they've held their menu prices flat, the à la carte school lunch price flat for the last three school years. That's remarkable. That's absolutely incredible. We've worked hand-in-hand with them to see that that happens. There have been some modest increases in the à la carte items, but there's a sensitivity to the circumstances that many families are facing, and they've held their prices flat. This is now the third year in a row that that has been the case. We've expanded the menu options, so to hold prices flat and expand the menu offerings has been nothing short of remarkable, and all of the menu items do meet the USDA guidelines for food service. So again, with regard to timeframe, we'll be working on putting together bid specs winter, spring, and have this resolved later in the spring. The facilities updates are plenty. There's a whole lot that we're working on with regard to facilities planning. That's the next presentation that I'll be delivering to the board and to our community. The stage floor at Yorktown High School is being redone. The arts are super important for us, and providing a stage floor that just gives students the best surface to perform on is really important to us. That work is underway. We anticipate that work will last for about three weeks. The Mohansick parking lot's completed. It's lined, it's terrific, and it's serving the purpose, including the drainage that we were able to tie in on the Mohansick parking lot. For anyone who's been in the Mohansick parking lot recently, you know that there's an area where the water just gathers in ponds. And in the wintertime, when there's sub-freezing temperature, that water turns to ice, and that can be quite the situation for buses and vehicular traffic. So we have addressed that, and that's something that will certainly serve us well when the cold weather months come. We are looking at a turf replacement of the main turf at YHS. We're looking at a resurfacing of the track. That's planned for the summer of 2024. More on the turf will be discussed in the next presentation. With regard to curriculum, there's just so much that's happening from a curriculum and instruction standpoint. We had about 50% of our faculty and staff participate in summer curriculum development. So teachers are working really hard over the summer. They're developing curriculum, modifying curriculum, enhancing curriculum, gathering resources, implementing new programs, designing lessons and units, and it's great work happening, and there was a ton of that happening this summer. We're offering some new courses at YHS, and that's really exciting, a new drone course, sports and medicine course. We're looking at a sports media course if the enrollment will bear that. And again, that's another exciting piece. We have these innovation grants that we're offering to faculty and staff, and already we're seeing some creativity and wonderful ideas come from our faculty and staff. And then there are some other, obviously, wonderful things. The new data dashboard that will provide us more comprehensive data on each student as we look to provide support and identify areas of growth and areas that we can support as a school district, and a focus on MTSS, which is a multi-tiered system of support. We'll be presenting to the board on that because there's a big push in our school district on MTSS, formerly known as RTI, Response to Intervention. And what it is, essentially giving students the supports that they need to experience success in our academic program, and that support's on an individualized basis. So that's quite exciting. Technology's always busy, and it's booming. We're at, just so you're aware, at the beginning of the year, and I know you are, and just so our community is aware, at the beginning of the year, we were running at about 150 open help desk tickets. So our technology department is running at about 150 requests for, whether it's hardware, software, login information, whatever the case may be, there are 150 tickets. Now, that's not a static number, because as they resolve, as our technology department, and they're terrific at what they do, as they resolve one help desk ticket, two more will come in. So right now, we're running at about 100 open help desk tickets, so as the technicians continue to resolve, more will continue to come in. The goal is that our performance can outpace the rate at which the tickets come in, and we can get that number, not down to zero, it'll never go down to zero because new tickets always arise, but get that number down into the teens or single digits even. And I just want to give kudos to Ms. Forsberg because we're one of very few districts that supports multiple platforms. In many school districts, at least in my experience, what you'll see is a single platform, whether you're a Mac district or a Google district or a PC district. We're in all of the above districts, because the goal here is not to make the technicians' lives easier, it's to provide teachers with the resources they need to be able to build learning in the classrooms. And Macs have worked in some genres of our organization, Chromebooks have worked in others, different pieces of software have worked in other courses, engineering courses have more specific software, and our technology department has really evolved and been able to meet all the needs of our courses. Communications, Brian Marchhauser is heading up our communications, has done a phenomenal job. I'm going to start with his email at the bottom of the screen. So as there are great things happening in our school community, please bring them to our attention. We're not always aware of every award and acknowledgement and recognition, but we want to celebrate every award, acknowledgement, and recognition. There's a monthly newsletter that we send out. However, I think our community is well aware that should there be a matter that arises, urgent or otherwise, I will send a communication in between those newsletters, and we have really built our social media presence. That's one of the biggest differences, I think, that you'll notice, whether it's Facebook, Instagram, or X, you'll see a Yorktown CSD presence there. Some new things for 2324, our school resource officers are, you'd think that we've always had school resource officers, the way they've just come into the school and hit the ground running. Mohansick and Brookside, faculty, staff, parents alike are delighted to have the school resource officers in the building, so my thanks to the board for your support of that. That was a big decision that you made, and thus far, by all accounts, it's been received very well and has been successful. The SROs are actively involved in all of the BERT team, the Building Emergency Response Team plannings, and all of the safety drills and protocols that we're running, and that is a huge, huge investment for our school district. Girls' flag football, we're getting that up and running. The JV, just an update to our community and to our board, the JV boys volleyball team did not come to fruition. We thought that we had the interest and the enrollment. When it came time for registration, the enrollment and the interest was not there. And so, like everything that we do here, we're attentive to the needs of our students, and we'll build a program for the needs of our students. In this case, the need was not there this year. We have the program, we're ready to offer the program, so when the need does arrive, the resources are there. And then, this is perhaps what I'm most proud of this school year, is our introduction of universal pre-K. And it's truly universal pre-K. You hear the term often, universal pre-K, UPK. And when you hear UPK, then you hear the term lottery associated with it, and it doesn't quite equate for me. In the Yorktown Central School District, every eligible child in this community has access to the program. And by eligible, there are two criteria that have to be met. You turn four on or before December 1st of this year, and you live within our school district's boundaries. If you meet those two criteria, the child gets enough pre-K, full day at no cost for the family. And I think the mic went out? Now, I can talk over the mic, but I know the camera's picking up the audio from here, so I don't know if I should continue without a microphone. Is this okay? That's not going to reach. So what I'll do is, do we have it on the mic? No? Okay. What we'll do is, I'm going to go back to my seat, and then when I invite Bonnie Fogarty up and her team, what we'll do is, you can take the administration seats and you can use the microphone there. So I'm going to make my way back to the podium, just because I wanted to, I want the quality of the audio for those of you who get home and online. Okay, so I'll continue on. Our UPK program is exciting. You often hear, and I don't know how much with regard to sound was cut out from the video, so you hear the term UPK, and this idea of a lottery just didn't sit right with us. It didn't sit right with the board, didn't sit right with me. We wanted every child to have access to the program, and that's something that we were able to make happen. We're so fortunate to have found great partners to assist us in achieving that goal, and I do want the community to know that we did put out an RFP to all of the preschool providers in the Yorktown Central School District catchment area. We're sensitive to the small businesses in town, to the daycares, to the preschools, and so we wanted to give them the first opportunity. But we wanted every child to be serviced. That was a prerequisite for us, and there was only one organization that was able to service all of the children in our district, and they were not from within the community. And that was the YMCA of Central and Northern Westchester. And when I met with them, when my team met with them, we instantly fell in love with their approach. And the approach that they take is so child-centered and so hyper-focused on students and their needs, and communication with families, and a model of academic rigor that aligns with our belief on academic rigor. And it was quite exciting to hear their plans, hear their vision for the program. They in turn heard our vision for the program, and the two could not have gone together any better. So at this time, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to introduce Bonnie Fogarty from the YMCA of Central and Northern Westchester. I'll ask her to come up to my seat, and Margarita Pinero's here, and Shayna Jack is here. We'll invite you to come up as well in case you'd like to add to the presentation. So Bonnie, you can come up to my seat? No. That's okay. They have a terrific presentation. So Bonnie, I'm just going to get to your slide so that you can see.
Fantastic. They're actually going to speak to it, Bonnie, so we can wait for a minute.
Yvette, what was uploaded is not the current. Not sure if you can refresh.
Thank you so much for having us. As Dr. Hatter said, I'm Bonnie Fogarty. I'm the Executive Director for the YMCA of Central and Northern Westchester, and we are just honored to be chosen as partners with the school district to have your universal pre-K program in district. We have been providers of universal pre-K for almost 10 years. This is what we do, and when meeting with the district, it really aligns not only your vision but with our mission and what we do as a nonprofit. We've always put children first and bring our core values of honesty, caring, respect, and responsibility into the forefront of our learning and teaching students. One of the biggest things is that we, with our team, know that we are building the foundations for their future, and early learning is the first step. So again, we are honored to be partners with you and really see this vision come to life. I'm going to introduce my team. I have Margarita Pinero, who is our Director of Early Learning Services, and Shayna Jack, who is overseeing the collaboration right now with the district.
Like Bonnie said, we do share in those sentiments. We're very honored and humbled to be here. We're so excited to have partnered with Yorktown and the district to serve the community. Our journey began this summer as we worked alongside an amazing facilities team to really prepare the grounds and the classrooms to be superb for our young learners. So that was a very exciting summer with a lot of long days into the nights, but we were so excited for what you guys are going to see, which is a reflection of the hard work, and we couldn't have done it without the support of Dr. Hatter and his team as well, as Dennis and his amazing team on site, because they hit the ground running for us, and whatever we needed, they helped us really logistically think it through and make it happen. So thank you again.
Shayna?
Okay, hi. So I'm just going, oh. Do you want to?
Yes, we're going to pull that out.
Do you want to click it? Oh, okay.
No, it's, she'll click.
Oh, okay. So I just kind of want to take you over the UPK overview and what it looks like, so we can click to the first slide. Okay. So the YMCA UPK program at French Hill serves four- to five-year-old children in a warm, nurturing, supportive environment. Classes are staffed by experienced, dedicated, New York State-certified, early childhood education teachers and aides. Currently, we have seven UPK classrooms with a total of 120 students enrolled in the program. We continue to have open enrollment to serve the needs of the Yorktown community. Our curriculum that we follow is called Pre-K on My Way, and Pre-K on My Way incorporates a variety of read-alouds and manipulatives to implement center-based play that will support children's literacy, language, and math development. Pre-K on My Way also meets the students' social and emotional needs, allowing educators to teach the whole, to teach to the whole child. A Day in the Life of a UPK Preschool. The YMCA runs a before-school program that runs from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 p.m., I mean, 8:30 a.m., sorry. The universal pre-K program's arrival starts at 8:30, and we begin our transition into the school around 8:50. Starting our day, upon arrival, students start to unpack their belongings and head to their tables to interact with friends and begin activities using manipulatives that support children's development and growth. Fine motor skills, eye-hand coordination, and visual discrimination are further developed in the classroom. Students are given many opportunities to be creative and problem-solving skills throughout the day. And then they start to head into the carpet for their morning meeting. During the morning meeting, students gather to begin their day. Here, they build community with each other by checking in and expressing on how they feel. Teachers also review the schedule of the day and incorporate practice importance around the letters and numbers of letter recognition and review letter sounds. Then the children head back to their tables to have morning snack. Students get a moment to have a snack with each other and talk about the different foods they are eating. Teachers also review healthy snacks choices over not-so-healthy choice. And then we start our small group centers. Small group activity occurs throughout the day. Different teaching blocks allow teachers to meet with students one-to-one, giving differentiated instructions to meet their individual needs. And then we do our gross motor, which we are able to use the gym as well as the playground and then the different courtyard. So just the other day, we were outside on the little courtyard that they just got repaved to do the parachute. So the gross motor activities are essential to help the children grow strong and healthy. After that, we head in for lunchtime. Keeping the children nourished and energy levels regulated is essential to, so they can participate in all the activities. This is actually one of my favorite activities, is their directive drawings. The directive drawings can be fun activities to do with young learners. It allows children to be creative and take pride in their work. So for this directive drawing, the teacher read the book, Don't Let the Pigeon Drive the Bus, and all the children drew what their pigeon looked like, as well as comments. So some of them are, he's not allowed to. He doesn't have, oh, he's sorry, he doesn't have hands, he doesn't have a driver's license. So it gives a chance for the children to be creative, and that happens once a week, the directive drawings. A look inside a day of learning. So here they are, where the teachers are doing the small group activities, circle time, touching on their feelings, and there's arts and crafts being done. Last Friday, we experimented with making our own slime for Fun Friday, and we did some building with Legos. Creating a classroom community. So we also like to do a lot of charts. So the first chart, they got to draw their self-portrait. We talked about how they can be bucket fillers. We graphed how long their names are, and then we also talked about our first-day feelings. And then also, how do we teach each other to be like family? And then we also do a science, there's like science charts that the kids as well do. We have a couple notes from our teachers. I'll just go ahead and read them. "I love being part of the UPK Yorktown program. My job is so rewarding working with young children and seeing them learn and grow each day. I look forward to working with these beautiful children all year while preparing them for kindergarten." And that was from Ms. Quiz. "My time as a UPK teacher has been so rewarding. I have the pleasure of seeing my students arrive at school with smiles. Every day, their academic, social, and emotional skills are growing. They are forming meaningful relationships with their classmates, and most importantly, they are loving, they are learning the love of school. Today, while working at a center, my students said, 'I'm having so much fun at school. Hearing this makes me feel so lucky to be able to do what I do.'" And that's from Ms. Schoenberg. Our last note is from Mrs. Dean. "Our school year is already off to a great start here at the YMCA Yorktown UPK site. I have thoroughly enjoyed coming into the building each morning and seeing smiling faces and eager bodies ready to learn and grow here. Our families are excited, our staff is so supportive, and our students are already shining stars. I look forward to continuing teaching, learning, loving, and growing with our young scholars this school year." And then a walk through the halls. These are just a couple of the bulletin boards that the teachers did. And then we just want to thank you again for this opportunity, and we look forward to building a community of love and learning with French Hill and the Yorktown School District.
Thank you for that, Shayna, Margarita, Bonnie. The one thing that I do want to add, and I think our microphone is now back on, the one thing I did want to add is that we conceived this idea during the budget development process, and in fact, late in the budget development process. So one of the prerequisites for bringing pre-K to our district was, we had to do it with little to no impact on our budget. And we were able to do that. So the state gave Yorktown a $5,400 allocation. That's the amount that the state allocates per pre-kindergarten student. So we looked for a partner who would accept that amount, and for anyone who's paid for daycare, anytime even recent or not-so-recently, you'll know that $5,400 for a full pre-K program for the entire school year is something that's quite rare. And what I'll tell you is, the YMCA had agreed to that business model where they would accept the state allocation, so the district does not have to invest anything beyond what the state is reimbursing us per pupil. And that is tremendous, that we can bring a pre-K program to our district and not add to the budget. There were some upgrades that we made on the campus, and you know, we should do that. French Hill's our asset, it's our building, we should invest a little into it. However, the investments are not quite what the community may think, because in a pre-K classroom, there's no technology in the classroom. It's all hands-on. It's all learning through experience and through play. So not having to outfit any classroom with the data drops, the wireless internet, the interactive display boards, and all of the other things, the devices, certainly saved on the investment to ready the facility, to welcome pre-K students in. So essentially, what's happening, the way the pre-K program is being funded, is the check comes in from the state on one side, and that exact amount's what's going out to the YMCA on the other side without the school district supplementing that amount. So my thanks to our partners at the YMCA. They have been a joy to work with. Margarita and I have kind of become familiar with each other throughout the summer, and we were just in direct communication, weekly meetings. Certainly Bonnie and Shayna are there and assisting and supporting, and Shayna's the go-to person now, day-to-day. But to get this program up and running was a huge lift, and I just wanted to recognize Margarita because she was with us every step of the way to get the program up and running from the initial meeting, and Bonnie was there certainly at the initial meeting as well. But throughout the summer, it has been just an honor to work with the group from YMCA. So we're happy to accept any questions. That concludes this first presentation. We're happy to accept any questions. Margarita, Bonnie, and Shayna are here, and we're happy to answer those questions. Deirdre and Lisa are here from the district, and we're happy to answer any questions that we can.
So let's, thank you. So let's start with pre-K questions, just so we don't have to keep them longer.
So let's start with pre-k questions, just so we don't have to keep them longer, because it's already evening. Pete, did you have any questions on the pre-k?
Yeah. Actually, I had two questions. It was only because it was asked of me. And one of them was, why December 1st as the cutoff, and not January 1st?
That's a state piece. So the state determines that date as December 1st.
Thank you. Now I can answer that. And what is the...
Microphone, Pete.
There's 120 kids in there today, correct? What is the, what is the maximum you could accept? What happens when 150 sign up?
Wait, wait. Can, we need to, yeah.
187 is the max, so we would just expand the classrooms. We're currently open, we have seven classrooms currently operating to meet enrollment, but we can add an additional three.
Okay. Thank you.
Catalina? No question. Mike?
No.
Freshman?
I loved seeing the pictures, because to me, we, I have not seen the site or, you know, met the children, of course, so to me, that was very helpful. Thank you. Dr. Hatter, would you be able to speak to what modifications, if any, were required to French Hill to make it available for UPK?
Yes, of course. So there was some paving in the back parking lot, because one of the things about our district, our board certainly, is we wanted to be sensitive to all the groups that were using the facility. So there are several other groups within French Hill servicing the children of Yorktown, and we wanted to be good community partners and good partners to anyone servicing children in our district. So there's Children's Corner that's there. That has a large enrollment. There's 10-10 Recreation, which provides a crucial service to our community, before and after care, and now there's our pre-k program. And so we wanted each organization to have distinct entrances. You have three- and four-year-olds coming through the door, so you wanted to have targeted entrances. In order to do that, we had to pave the rear parking lot, not the entire rear parking lot, it's actually a relatively small amount of property that we had to pave. So we did that to create a separate and distinct entrance, just because we're attuned to safety of our children, we want everybody going to the right place. We made some upgrades with regard to just painting and lighting in the hallways. French Hill has not had substantial investments since we idled the building several years ago, over a dozen years ago at this point. So we upgraded some lights to go to LED fixtures, make them more efficient, and certainly better quality for our students to learn in. We made some upgrades with regard to security and key swipes, so that we can compartmentalize the school, so that our three- and four-year-olds can stay in their location, Children's Corners, children can stay in their location, so that children are safe and accounted for. That was another piece. The furniture, we had already. That's one of the benefits of having, whether it was an idled school building, or during COVID, when we had to get a little more furniture involved, although it wasn't much. But we had the furniture already, so it was just a matter of lowering, and Dennis and his team did a phenomenal job lowering the desks down, so that three- and four-year-olds can access the desk, lowering the chairs. But with regard to furniture, there wasn't much. We did have to buy play kitchen sets. That was one thing that we did invest in, were play kitchen sets, and I learned all about play kitchen sets. I became an expert in play kitchen sets. So we did access that. We actually recycled the rugs. So we took the kindergarten classroom rugs, put them in pre-k, and bought our kindergarten teachers' new rugs. It was just a thanks for helping us with the curriculum. And so that, our kindergarten classrooms were outfitted with new rugs, and we repurposed the existing kindergarten rugs. And that, unless, and then there was just some supplies and materials for learning, day-to-day learning, that you're not buying Chromebooks, but you're buying workbooks that the children are working from. But I believe that was the extent, unless I'm missing something. Bathrooms, yes, we had to upgrade some bathrooms. That was one piece. With the addition of 120 more students and making everything ADA accessible, we did have to add a couple of bathrooms in the building as well. So that was probably the most, and that's the one I left out, was the bathroom upgrade, and that was significant for us. And we did some painting in the classrooms, so those were upgrades. But it was our in-house crew who did all of the construction work, whether it was the electrical wiring, whether it was the painting, adjusting of the furniture, assembling those kitchen sets that came in. It was all our in-house crew, and my thanks to them. I don't know how they got the work done, but they did, they did it in a timely manner. And we were able to host the town camp during the summer as well, which gave us a starting point not of July 1st, but of July 28th or August 1st. And so that was remarkable, that within that finite amount of time, that we could still be good partners to the town and welcome the town camp into our facility while still readying the building for pre-k.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
Just thank you for this wonderful update. It's really nice to see what's going on there. You know, really a nice, seamless process to kindergarten. It's nice to have it in our community. So thank you for working with us.
Lisa?
Yeah, thank you for doing this for us. I am looking forward to the data in years come, as these 120 students enter into our kindergarten and our first grade, to see what a difference the program will make.
Yeah, I'm just, thank you, it's wonderful. Pete and Mike, we remember when we had half-day kindergarten, and we put in full day, now we've got UPK, we're really doing it here. This is exciting, though. I'm so thrilled for our students. I think this is a great, great thing for them. So thank you very much. Thank you for being wonderful partners to us, so thank you.
I know you have an early warning of three- and four-year-olds tomorrow.
So we have, yeah.
Thank you.
So, questions on the rest of the presentation? Lisa, did you have any questions?
No.
Carol?
Nothing.
Freshman? Mike? Catalina?
No.
Pete? I had a couple. Food service. It's the new year, so parents have to go on SchoolBucks to put money on their accounts. What happens when they run out of money, their kids run out of money? How, can you talk to us about that process?
Yes, that's a great, great point. So there are low-balance notifications that go out through our automated My SchoolBucks system. So for parents who are viewing this at home, and I thank you for asking that question, you will not see an email from the Yorktown Central School District. It will be from an @MySchoolBucks account, and it will be a low-balance notification. There'll be three of those, and that's generally set when the balance falls below $10. So as the balance then goes negative, those emails continue to go out every two weeks. You can replenish your account, or a parent can replenish the account for their child through My SchoolBucks's app. The maximum's $120. There is a $2.75 charge. We do not collect that charge, it's a processing fee from My SchoolBucks. Or if you wish to avoid the charge, or if you wish to not put your credit card information into a computer, your child at home, your child is able to come into the school with cash or a check presented to the, any one of the cafeteria workers, and they will manually input or credit the account with that amount, and that avoids paying the processing charge.
All right, so I just want to be clear. Are students, even if they have a negative balance, are still allowed to charge? So a parent can't assume that if they run out of money, that the child is going to say, "I ran out of money," because the child will never know that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It's on the parent to notice, get the notice?
Balances are not communicated to children. There's an email that goes to the parent or guardian account, and a child has never denied a meal.
So we want to make sure the parents really look for those notices as kids start swiping for meals?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just add to that?
Sure.
So as a parent who put their kids through with this lunch program, that service fee was always concerning, right? So you can't overcharge it. So you could put as much money as you want...
Up to $120 per child at a time.
Right, $120 per child, so you only get charged the one service fee, and then, let's say your child doesn't use all that money, it can be transferred to another child during the school year, or when they leave the Yorktown system, I got my refund check in a couple of weeks. It was not a long time. So you don't lose the money if you put it in.
Thank you. Thank you, I'm glad you could, because I don't remember how it works. And then, my other question, cable channel.
Yes.
It's always down, it's never working. We know that. What are we going to do to fix this? This is years and years and years. This is not Brian. This is years and years and years. It's the entire time I've been on the board, we're always talking about the cable channel being down. I think we need to do something.
And I, and I think that cable channel reaches an audience that, and we want to try to reach as many audiences as we can. So I don't know what the ratings are, I don't know if Nielsen's rating or public access...
Well, they're zero, because we had, it's never up.
But what we are doing, and Brian and I met on this last week, and we discussed some of the concerns that we've had with the cable channel, we're bringing in a consultant who specializes in this type of equipment. It's a, it's a really specialized equipment. We do a lot on YouTube, we do a lot in other segments, whether it's athletics through Team One Sports, whether it's live streaming, concerts and shows through YouTube, or the board meetings that we're able to post the next morning. So board meetings are generally posted by the next morning, but the cable channel is still really important to us. So we are working with a consultant, I believe the consultant's coming in this week, Wednesday, there it is, to make sure, to assess the materials that we have, the equipment that we have, and then make recommendations on moving forward, because it is down, I call it intermittent downtime, but I think it's more than intermittent downtime at this point. We'll address that.
Thank you. Okay, I'm done. Anybody else? All right. We can move on. Thank you.
So we have one more presentation for this evening. And I wanted to provide the board, and certainly the community, with an update on our facilities' planning, and I'll be doing this, if not at every meeting, then certainly every other meeting, to just ensure that everyone has the common understanding of where the steering committee of the board has taken their discussions, where architects and construction managers have advised us, and be presenting the community with the most updated plans as possible. There is a website for facilities' planning, it includes all of the information, an FAQ, it includes a survey that we conducted, the results of that survey, and all kinds of other important information that can just frame a better understanding of what we're considering. I shared this slide previously. We looked at programmatic needs, student needs, and that determines the capacity of our school. It's not just about square footage, it's about programs that are in our schools as well. And once you take the capacity of the schools and you look at the projected enrollment, there is a lot of development happening in town. It's something that we're keenly aware of, and we're keenly aware of the potential impact that will be had on our school enrollment. We have been informed by the developers that it's anticipated that for every 10 units developed, one child will result. We had our own study conducted, we commissioned our own study, just to better understand what the enrollment implications would be, and it actually, it was more than that, it was more than one child per 10 units, but it wasn't in the order of hundreds. So we will see an enrollment increase. This is not just about projected enrollment, it's about student needs, programs that we're hoping to offer, and when those factors converge, we have a need to expand capacity. We've already taken so many steps. French Hill, reopen French Hill, that's come up, that's been a conversation that has kind of shined through the survey responses, through some of the inquiries I've received. And irrespective of the construction costs to renovate French Hill, the one big piece, and anyone who is in a school knows, that if we're going to reopen a school, it's not so much the construction costs, because those are actually comparable, the construction costs and the renovation costs, new construction versus renovation are actually comparable. However, with French Hill, there's a principal and assistant principal, office staff, a nurse, an SRO, security personnel outside and inside, a psychologist, social worker, office technicians to help with the technology. The bus run is another half-million dollars that we'd have to account for. The annual recurring costs of reopening French Hill approach $3 million annually, and that's a recurring cost that we'll have to absorb within our budget, budget cycle after budget cycle. And with a keen sensitivity to taxpayers, if we propose modest additions to each of the schools, we don't really see those recurring costs. Maybe you're hiring a cleaner to clean the new wing of the building, but it's nowhere near the $3 million price tag that would recur each year should we reopen French Hill. So that's a big part of the calculus here, is being sensitive to the taxpayer to not add those recurring costs to our budget. So where we have landed ultimately is small additions to each of our elementary schools. What I'd like to do is just go through an aerial shot of each of the buildings to just give the community a better perspective on where the proposed additions would go and the scope of the project. All with, and just like we made the addition of pre-k relatively budget-neutral, certainly from year to year, it's budget-neutral, there were some upfront costs that you have to invest to ready the facility, but they were modest, very modest, they didn't move the needle on our budget. Similarly, here, we'd like any construction or capital project that we propose to be tax-neutral to our community, and to not have any substantial impact to the tax rate. So I'll share with you, the first image is at Brookside. There are two modest additions, one to the top left, one to the top right of the building. In all, there are approximately six classrooms that we're looking to add. We believe that there's an eight-ability factor that makes six the right number, there's an enrollment projection that makes six the right number, and the capacity needs point to six classrooms being the right number. We don't want to overbuild, and we don't want to underbuild, we believe six is right within the number that we need to be. The next diagram is of Mohansick School, that's an aerial shot of Mohansick. You'll see the top left of the building is a six-classroom, two-story addition to Mohansick. Brookside's one-story, it would be a one-story addition. Mohansick on that side of the building, it's two stories, so this would be a two-story addition. It does encroach on the playground a bit, and we're cognizant of that, and we'll certainly make sure that that area is intact once the construction is done in the aggregate square footage. This is Crompond School. In the bottom-left corner of the screen, you'll see a modest addition of six classrooms proposed at Crompond as well. And again, at each of the elementary schools, I just want to note, right now, and you saw this in the presentation that Mimasi Architects gave last school year in the spring, there are services being delivered in hallways, and we have to be able to do better than that. And it's not for a lack of creativity or resourcefulness, we have turned every square inch of space, usable space, into whether it's a small group instruction space, or whether it's a storage space, we have literally turned over every square foot of space within each of the elementary schools. At the middle school, there are classrooms that you'll see at the top of the screen that have purple going along the perimeter. Those classrooms, the middle school has not been refreshed in quite some time, the interior classrooms have not been refreshed in quite some time, and they, and they need it, and they show that they haven't been refreshed in quite some time, whether it's broken cabinetry, door hardware that gets stuck, lights that are not the best environment for learning. So we're looking at replacing doors and hardware, where everything would be ADA compliant with the doors and hardware, ceilings, LED lighting, flooring, cabinetry, and paint. We're looking at also refreshing the space, this cafeteria. 800 children plus come through this space, and is there more that can be done to make it more inviting for middle school children? We're looking at the music wings. Music is so important in a child's life, and can we better structure and can we better accommodate the chorus, band, and orchestra programs through acoustical panels, better storage of the new instruments that we're investing in with this year's budget, and so on. We're looking at our Home and Careers Program. We have a great kitchen classroom there, but it was designed 60 years ago. So can we modernize that space with working cabinetry and working appliances? At the high school, we're looking at the music wing again, we're looking at the, and at the middle school, pardon me, art classrooms as well, and updating the art classrooms. At the high school, we're looking, again, band, orchestra, chorus classrooms, practice rooms for each of those groups, we're looking at art classrooms, and we're looking at our science research space. Currently, the science research space is a bit undersized for the volume of the program, so we're looking for easier access for our students in the science research program and a space that's a little more conducive to the student population enrollment. In addition, we're looking at a turf field. So earlier, I spoke outside of the scope of the bond, we're looking at replacing the carpet on the original turf field to the left, and we're looking at adding a turf field space, and the turf field is so much more than an athletic space currently, and this is something that parents have brought to my attention, at the middle school, if it rains, it's difficult to take the children outside, because the grassy area where recesses held becomes muddy. Children slip, fall, become dirty, and it's not really conducive to a productive remainder of the day. So this turf field will also serve as a recess space for our middle school students. In addition, having two turf fields, and this is what resonated with me most, right now, we have practices going on until 8, 10 o'clock at night. They're quite late. We want to get our students home. They can do homework, they can study a little earlier. We believe that having another field can end those athletic practices. We believe that having another field can end those athletic practices a little earlier in the day so that rather than having an eight to 10 p.m. practice, we can conclude activities far earlier in the afternoon or late afternoon, early evening hours. That field does not drain so well, and we will certainly work with that and work with our environmental engineers to ensure that all protocols are followed and that everything is done with respect to the surrounding environment. And of course, we need SED approval, and we go through a whole process for the development of the turf fields. So that's one area that we're looking at. It, it opens the door to other discussions that we may or may not have, but we're certainly looking at an additional turf field. It would be a baseball field combined with a girls' field hockey field. And it's, although it's going to be marked as a field hockey field, there's nothing that prohibits a soccer team, a lacrosse team, or a football team from, for using that field for practices. So this way, simultaneously, we can have practices on the turf going. And we're also looking at a safer infill for the fields. It's something that we're cognizant of, and more to come on that. Just some additional items. We're looking at site lighting. It's 8:09, so it's dark out, and we have students who are on the campus practicing until eight or 10, hopefully not, not much longer. But we have students who participate in performances and shows, who are practicing in the band or the musical, and they're here late. And we want to make sure that the lighting on our campus, which would be in an LED form, would provide for safe passage. And then some security hardening. And that's an area that I'm not able to go into too much depth on, but there are some very important strategic investments that we're going to make in the hardening of our facility to just continue with our safety efforts. And it's something that we're not able to do outside of the scope of the bond because it's cost prohibitive, but it's necessary for us to do. So those are the additional items. We have some next steps. And these were the same next steps that I presented at the last presentation. The, we're going to continue to work with the architects. The steering committee of the board is meeting every other Tuesday. And that's something that we, we found to be productive and a schedule that we need to maintain. We are looking to have a design to the community later in the fall, or middle of fall. We're looking to maintain a tax-neutral proposal to the community. And I'll just jump down. The vote, we would anticipate, would be quarter one of 2024. However, no firm date has been set at this point. We're still waiting on the design. And once we have a design solidified, we'll certainly present that to the community and determine a date at that point. The board would determine a date at that point. Happy to take any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you. Can I do two clarifications before I open up for questions? One of the things is baseball, we look at the turf because one of the problems is that drainage is so awful, baseball can't even play on their field. They're normally playing off-site at one of the town fields. Is that correct?
That is accurate. Our baseball team has played only a handful of games on their home field because the condition of the field. And it's by no fault of ours, or, or by no circumstances that our operations and maintenance department can't contend with. But coming off of a winter when snow has now melted on that field, and then the rain from the spring makes it a little more, exacerbates the problem, makes it a little more difficult for us to get on that field.
And then also, we keep talking tax neutral. Can you explain what tax neutral is and how we are going to achieve or get close to that? So, I mean, I think the community should understand what that means and how we get there.
So Lisa, I'll turn to you to explain the tax neutral piece and to speak to how we're going to maintain that, and then I'll just fill in.
So the district over the next few years has some significant debt expiring on our books, which means we've come to the end of some notes on previous projects. And so that, we call that debt falling off. And what we want to do is replace that debt with the debt for these new projects so that the debt level for the district remains constant and thereby not increasing the tax rate impact to the district. And that is also made up of two parts. It's not only just our debt level, but it also then becomes offset by the state building aid that we receive from the state. So when you combine those two numbers together, it should match comparably to where we are now, again, to keep the net impact to the district at the same level.
But when we say tax neutral, that we're only talking our debt part of it. We are not talking our operational budget. It's two different pieces?
Correct. It means that the district will not incur additional tax burden because of this specific project. It does not mean any other programs or services that the district may encounter.
Okay, thank. I just wanted to be very clear because we say tax neutral, and I don't know if everybody understands quite what that entails. All right, thank you. All right, questions? Lisa?
No, I don't have any questions. I look forward to hearing more information as we get closer.
Cheryl?
Yes, I have a question. Assuming that the bond goes through in the first quarter of 2024, when would the work begin? And more importantly, how long would the work take? And when would we be done with all of the projects that we've been looking into?
So once we determine a scope, we'll be able to provide the community with a better timeline. We would anticipate that the work, some of the work, would start in the '24, '25 school year, and that that work would carry into '26, hopefully not into '27, but there's the potential that that happens too. But we haven't set a definitive timeline. Once we do first establish scope, we'll certainly come out with a timeframe so that all of the work is attached to specific deadlines and timelines that we have. And I anticipate that that will happen at some point later this fall.
Thank you. We also have to be careful. Once we get a bond, a bond is approved, we have things that sometimes fall out of our control. After the design phase, it goes up to SED. We have no control over how long SED could take. It could take weeks. It could take months. It could take a year or so. It kind of falls out of our hands. We've been there before.
Thanks.
Rashmi?
I have no questions.
Mike? Sorry. Catalina?
I have a couple. One...
Wait, can you talk into the microphone?
Looking at the design field with the new turf, was there any discussion about adding a permanent bathroom structure? Right now, we have porta-potties, and then we also use the high school locker rooms up the hill.
So that's a great question with regard to bathrooms. So we, there's an immediate problem with bathrooms, and then there's a longer term. What are we doing about it longer term? So for the immediate piece, right now, for anyone who's been to a high school football game on our campus, there are anywhere between 2,000 and 3,000 people and three portable bathrooms. So for this week, we're adding five more restrooms. We'll have a total of eight on the campus for the immediate, short-term, because a bond's not going to solve the remaining season that we have or any of the other community events that we hold here where there are only three restrooms. Longer term, we have had the conversation as a steering committee with regard to bathrooms, and can we add a structure? Where would that go? How many stalls? What are the sizes of those stalls? So that conversation's ongoing. One of the things that we are discussing is, okay, here are the needs that we have as a school district. We need to add on because we need capacity at Mohansick, Brookside, and Cronpon. We absolutely need to make some of the critical infrastructure upgrades to our middle school and some of the upgrades to the high school. And then there's, okay, well, what else can we do? And that second list. So we're looking at bathrooms on the second list. We're looking at some of the other projects on a second list. But those conversations are still ongoing. Great question, something that certainly has come up, and I'm guessing will continue to come up in the steering committee meetings.
Thank you. And my second question is, adding the second turf field, would that open up the conversation to bring back modified sports? I know a lot of community members have been asking me and, and the board about how can we bring back modified sports in any capacity?
Sure, sure. So the field situation is one part of the conversation. And then it becomes the annual recurring budgetary piece. And can we fit that in? Do we phase it in? Is it philosophically even something that we subscribe to as a school district? And one of the things that we may want to do is I can invite Mr. Barrett, our athletic director, back, and we can speak through freshman sports and modified sports. And we can even do that in October at, at the next presentation, which I don't believe will be at this coming meeting, but the meeting after that. We can certainly have a discussion on modified sports, the efficacy of modified sports. There are some good things and there are some bad things about modified sports. It's not all great. So I can have, and I will have Rob speak to that. And Rob is intimately involved both in the high school program and with our youth programs. So we can certainly present on that. The field does certainly help by giving more usable space because we don't have enough usable space at this point. So that will help, but then there are the other components that we'll look at.
Okay. I was just looking because the field hockey, that's something that our youth program, YSE does not, does not offer. So our students have to go to Lakeland or other districts for that.
Pete?
Yeah, two, two questions. So the presentation, every, all the work in there is, would all be accomplished through a bond, correct?
Correct. The, the work that was presented, the only exception to that is on the fields. The Charlie Murphy turf field, the, the current turf field, the replacement of what they call the carpet, the turf portion, and the resurfacing of the track would be done through a capital fund, not through the bond.
Okay. And then just, you had talked about with the extra classrooms. There's roughly 18 classrooms, correct? And is that exactly what we need to meet the enrollment needs today? Or are we projecting or planning for the future?
We're projecting out 10 years. The one factor that, the two factors that we can't predict are the student needs coming into our school district. We can count numbers, but there's a difference between counting numbers and then understanding what the needs are. So as we have our capacity for 812 classrooms, we're taking full-size classrooms offline for a smaller number of students, which is, which is terrific. It's just something that is difficult to plan for 10 years out, or even five years out. So that, unless the children are already into the school system and you could account. But the other part, and this leads into the other component, is as new construction happens in town, yes, there's actually a longstanding metric used. It's called the Rutgers University Model to Project Enrollment Based on Construction. And that's a model from over 40 years ago that's used. As people are buying those homes, if they wish to stay in the community, live in the community, and downsize, who's backfilling the homes? And from my experience in conversations with real estate professionals in the community, it's generally families with children of school age. And that's a number that's very difficult to project. So based on the numbers that we have now, yes, and the information we have now, yes, we are building any more, wouldn't be aidable by the state. Any less would be insufficient to meet what we anticipate the demands would be.
So, so the day that those classrooms are finished, all 18 will not be full?
They shouldn't all be full right away.
So...
They'll be used. They'll be utilized. And what we'll do is we can put some, separate where maybe teachers are sharing a room. We can separate the services so that they have their own room, but they will be available for a classroom at some point.
And will the teachers that staff those classrooms be existing teachers? Or is that become additional recurring costs? Because we have to increase the staff.
So it's a hybrid answer to that. Right now, if somebody's delivering a service in a hallway, we're going to take them out of a hallway and put them into a room. We do anticipate some needs coming up and some programmatic needs coming up. That would require new staffing. So the answer to that is it's going to be a combination of the two.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Well, just a quick comment to that, Pete. So having gone through some of the steering committee meetings, there was a piece that I learned this year that the State Education Department has a formula that they use to determine how many classrooms you should have by your enrollment. And we're limited in how far we can expand because if we go beyond their formula, we don't get state reimbursement for the building of those classrooms. So there's a balancing act between, you know, we'd love to be able to build as many as we could, but they won't, they won't aid them. So we're, we're trying to make sure we come in right at the, right at the max.
Makes sense.
And the aid's about 50 cents on every dollar. Is that correct? Close to 60 cents, actually.
And in some cases, we're having to be mind readers because we, we're trying to react to things going on in town that we don't know. And we don't know, we don't know what, what's coming down the pike, and we don't know what is already in the pike, or how that's going to reflect on us because it's still up in the air. So you're trying to predict the future. It's hard.
And we've done our due diligence. We've commissioned a study of enrollment. We've commissioned a capacity study. So we've certainly done our due diligence. But there are some variables with regard to student needs and with regard to who's backfilling homes that are vacated within the community over the next five or 10 years.
But when you look at it, in my mind, it's very fiscally responsible how we've gotten to this point right now. You know, when we look at all the different scenarios, it makes the most sense.
Yes. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Okay, we are going on to our board discussion item. We have the committee discussion. The way we left it last time was we were going to come back this week and discuss whether we wanted to add one, two, or three committees. And if it was less than the three that Ron was proposing, which ones we wanted to add, which one or ones we wanted to add. I don't know if anybody wants to start the discussion. The committees were, that Ron was talking about was an educational vision committee, a sustainability committee, and a cultural awareness and equity committee.
I thought we were going to get some information or share some information about what the scope of those committees would be.
Ron discussed them.
Right, but I, I thought after the last meeting that we talked about sharing information via email about the scope of those. Maybe I'm recalling it incorrectly, but that's what I thought.
I actually thought it was, we were taking whichever ones we decided to go with, we were going to work with the administration to build out the, the vision of those, of that, of those committees. That's how I recalled it. Because I, I, I thought we were like, whether it was sustainability or we were going to say, okay, what's the district's goal on sustainability? And then using that committee to help achieve that goal. That's how I remember it coming down. But I know we did discuss kind of setting an overarching goal to it, I thought. But because we don't have them for any of them.
Oh, I, I think I remember it your way, Pete, but I'm not 100%.
So I'm...
Go ahead, Ron.
I'm happy to put together additional information that can better frame it or discuss topics and then revisit the discussion if, if that's...
If we're going to kick this can down the road, then I think we just need to decide where we're kicking it so that next time we come back, we actually have a discussion. Because we could keep doing this all year and have nothing.
But, but I also think we need to, we, we did talk about maybe not taking a small kind of bite of the apple here and picking maybe one or two of them rather than looking at all three. I, I do think that we can have a discussion to say, hey, we think this one is the most important. And that can gets kicked to saying, okay, here's the, the district's vision on those, whichever one it is. Because I think all three of them are important, but I also think that we can accomplish more by focusing our efforts rather than try to be all things to all.
Okay.
That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Anybody else?
I, I wasn't here for the last meeting due to personal matter. But is it worthwhile to solicit some feedback from the community on, you know, where the thoughts are? Because I understand we have, you know, we can come up with our goals and our vision, but I think it helps to understand what, what the community is looking for in terms of our goals. Like we, like I feel like we come up with the goals based on what's needed, not just what we think. So I wonder if it's worth getting some input from the community on...
But I think that's what Pete was saying, that we were going to decide the committee and then work to develop what that was with the community or however we did it. But first, we have to decide whether we're going to have one committee, two committees, or three new committees. And then once we determine we're going to have the committee, then we can work on what the actual framework is going to be.
And get the feedback from the community to say, okay, this is what's important as we head down... as we head down that path of, of whichever one it is.
Right. And I was suggesting use the community to find the basis for which one of those, one or two or three of those we're picking.
And, and how do you propose to do that?
I think the way we've done, you know, via, via the survey, we've done it in the past, we've sent out surveys or questionnaires, and the same way we've done other things.
So, just ask them which one of the three committees, how they rank the committees. I mean, we're looking just to choose committees right now, not, not choose the inside framework mission.
Can we flesh them out a little bit, have a mission statement for it, for each one, then attach them to, somehow to our areas of focus, and then present that to the community, and maybe get feedback on that? Because I think the community will need a little bit more information on what, what we, because we did come up with the committees, right? The community didn't. So, I think if we flesh it out a little bit more, and give the community, if we're going to have a survey, um, I, I think that, that might be, because just to put a committee up there, I don't think the community's gonna know exactly.
Right. And, and Ron gave his, you know, he, he gave his rationale for why he, what he thought was important in it, but I thought, then, going back to what Pete was saying, that if we're driving the mission statement, isn't that counterproductive to what Pete was saying? Is that, once you have the committee, then you get the community in to help drive your mission statement, right? Am I wrong with that?
Well, that, that's how I, I would have envisioned it, is, is going that direction, is building it out, once the committee is formed, um, with the input of the community. I, I mean, I, I, I do think it's important to get the input of the community.
I...
So, go ahead, Catalina.
And I was thinking that one of the committees, to get the community involved, like you were saying, Rashme, but in that educational vision, right? Because we all have different, um, aspects that the community has, you know, thinks the educational committee should go, right? Uh, we've gotten two letters for modified sports, that's an educational vision, right? We, we're talking about regions and, you know, building these programs, so, you know, sta-, starting this commu-, uh, this committee, and then having that input from the community about what our vision should be. Because, you know, when we say educational vision, I think the community thinks of so many different aspects of, uh, what that is, and bringing them into that.
To that point, I don't know how we can choose which committee we should focus on without knowing what they are. I don't associate modified sports with the educational vision.
Exactly.
Maybe it should, but, but it, without some sort of scope of what we're talking about, I don't know how we can choose one.
But, but Ron had explained the scope, and he had put it in an email to all of us.
I, I'm aware, but I'm also looking at the minutes from, from the meeting, and there was gonna be more discussion. Um, so, I, I'm just, I'm at a loss, I don't know, uh, you know, Catalina's understanding of educational vision includes modified sports, mine would not. So, I, that's where I think it need, there needs to be some understanding of what it is, what is our intent, before we can choose something.
Well, Lisa, I think that's where we bring in the community, and, uh, I'm saying to have them be involved of that process.
But, how do we pick the one that we wanna focus on right now, without knowing what that involves? I, I, and that's just where I am. I, I'm happy to hear what everyone thinks, but I just, I don't know how I could pick, because I have no idea what it is we're, we're really looking at.
I mean, just to jump in, um, so, I know for the last couple of years, we've been hearing a lot from the community, also for sustainability, I see we have folks here tonight, I've seen them a lot, um, in the last couple of years, and how do we say that's not just as important? So, I think, I think in order for us to set the priorities, and we've always been really good about, um, you know, getting feedback and getting a pulse of where, you know, where, what's important, and, you know, how to move forward, so, my suggestion would be to, um, get some feedback and, uh, kind of work based on that. And then, of course, it's not a one-time process, so even once the committee's formed, you know, do what Peter's saying, work with them to form the goals for each of those committees. But I think there are multiple, there needs to be multiple touchpoints, um, and let's, so, let's start with understanding where the priorities are.
So, to clarify, we're saying we should not do all three committees. That's why?
Well, I just don't want, I don't wanna get stretched too thin, right? There's only seven of us, where we're looking at existing committees that, that only have a couple of board members on them. Um, I, I, uh, my concern is, I'm, I'm all for all three, but to stretch everyone too thin, that we just can't do it.
I think we talked about staggering the rollout, didn't we? Talked about staggering how we were going to roll them out? So, I guess it's just getting a prioritization schedule, and how we're gonna, we take on one this year, but figuring out what the first one will be, and then how we're gonna, you know, integrate the next, uh, the next priority, so, the next committee.
Mike, what do you have there?
I mean, to me, the, the superintendent, you know, proposed three different committees. We discussed what they were supposed to be about in general terms. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in each of them. For me, tonight, I, I think we should decide, you know, are we doing all three? If we're not gonna do all three, then, you know, which one or two should we focus on initially? And then, start to put, you know, start to put the framework around what each one's gonna do, how often is it gonna meet, what's it gonna discuss, who's gonna be involved, you know? That all has to happen, but first, we have to decide, how many of these are we doing to start? I think we can, personally, I think we can handle at least two of them, um, initially, and, you know, as we see what's involved in each one, maybe we have to add a third one, you know, we can add a third one, but I can't see starting with three from this point forward. To me, that's too many. There's, there's only seven of us, and we already have, what is it, five committees? Uh, you know, there's only so much we can do. So, um, I would like to see us at least tackle one or two of these, uh, in the immediate future.
Anybody else? I'm in agreement with you that I would like to at least hit two of them if we could. Um, and I'll put it out there, I would think the educational vision's important, and sustainability is, is important. Um, I don't think you can really put one over the other at this point. Um, I mean, that's just my opinion, I don't know how many else feels.
Well, to me, there's another tie-in, that, both of those committees have a lot, that will have a lot to do with the bond work that we're talking about, and the facilities. You know, there's a, there's a sustainability component to the work that needs to be done, there's obviously an educational component to it, so, if we could get those in place, I think it would help us as we move forward with the facilities updates and, and the work that's gonna need to be done. But, that's the way I see it. I'm not discounting the other committee, but I just think those two, right now, fall into line with a lot of the things that, a lot of the decisions that we will have to make as we move forward in this facilities process.
Yep, that ma-, that makes sense to me, Mike, when you put it in that context. That makes sense to me, I just, I, you know, I am concerned about our ability to, to handle two brand-new things.
Hundred percent.
And I think I hesitate to say that the third proposed committee, which was the, uh, the DEI committee, is not, um, as important as the first two, because to me, the first letter that stands in the East Team is empathy, which really builds on that, right? So, I, I don't know that, um, we can just, um, not take that on, you know? So, um, I, I think the three committees are just as important, um, but I would like to hear more on, um, where the priorities are.
So, are you saying you would prefer to start all three? If we're gonna start two, we should start all three? I'm not in disagreement, I'm just asking.
Nope, that's not what I said. Um, I am saying that we should put out a survey to the community and understand what their, um, what their, what their thinking is at this time, and go from there. And, it may very well come out as, well, three is all, be, you know, all three are ranked just as important, in which case, we'll have to have another discussion and go from there. Or, we might see one is, um, extremely, you know, important, or two are. So, I don't know what that outcome will be, but I would like to see it. Before I decide, you know, that, yes, this is more important than the other two, or these two are more important than the third.
Okay, I, I'm not quite sure how we were to survey to understand the priority of a committee, um...
We could do it, uh, you know, I would, I would like it, if we're gonna do it that way, we, we've gotta do it quick. We, we've already, you know, we started this discussion last year, and we haven't made any decisions yet, so...
Yep.
Um, you know, it's the beginning of the year, let's, if we're gonna survey people, let's do it ASAP, and, you know, get back in front with results, and see if that changes our decisions at all.
So, I'm looking back at Ron's email, uh, where he talks about the committees, as well as the format for committee presentations. Um, I think that we could take the, what, uh, Dr. Hatter has in these emails, and put it out, uh, maybe with some modifications from board members, um, put it out in that same survey style that you do, that, that I think works so well, and see what, what the, what the community thinks in terms of the scope, um, prioritizing one, two, or three, or something else, you know, and other, um, and then go from there. Um, I, I agree with Mike, I feel like we do a lot of talking and not, not too much action, and I'd like to see some action take place, I just, um, I, I don't know specifically what, what it is we're talking about, so I'm not sure how I could explain it to a community member, so perhaps we can get some more input from them with, uh, with what Dr. Hatter put together already.
Can, can we agree that we can only take on one or two? Because I think when, when you put out a survey, it's gonna come back with things we haven't even thought about yet.
Yep.
And, but at the end of the day, from a, um, accountability and a, uh, actionability, two committees is probably the max that we could take on. I, I think we have to agree that we're, we're not gonna, if five things come back, we're gonna look at them and go, which ones are the most important, and then we're gonna pick all five, or we're gonna pick two of them? I, I, because, because again, then we're gonna just keep kicking this can down the road, if we don't at least agree that, let's see what the community says, and, um, we're only gonna do two. Because that's all we have, the, the capacity and the bandwidth to do. Um, that's, I, I, I want us to get, get to a place, I, I keep going back to when we did the wellness, the whole thing, we had, um, the community, the teacher, and a board member that drove and created the goals for it. And it, it, and, and that's what evolved to, to what we're doing today. And it took a year for that whole thing to evolve and to develop, but, there was a very succinct way i- it was, was presented to the board. And, I mean, the, the, it was, it was two people that got up in front of the, the, the board and said, hey, this is what we wanna take on. So, but, but at that time, there wasn't, we weren't adding committees, um, so, I just wanna make sure that we, whatever we decide, that we, we don't try to be all things to all, all people, because we won't be, we'll, we'll fail miserably.
So, your, your thought is, two is our max?
Well, well, to me, that, I, I mean, from the beginning, one or two of them, to me, are, are, are the max we should be even, we should be even looking at. And, and even with the three that presented, I, I've got kinda no dog in the hunt there. I, I think they're all important, so if we picked two of them, I'd be whichever two it was, but then, one of us has to own that committee and, 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 and drive it. That, that's what it becomes. So, um, but, to get the community's input, then it needs to be driven toward something very finite.
Right. So, they'd have to rank it, we, we choose a number of committees, and they say, if we say one, choose your number one, or if we say two, choose your top two, choose your top three, whatever?
I, I, I guess, I, I mean, that, that's how, I mean, what, what is the survey gonna accomplish? What do we want the survey to accomplish? We want it to accomplish what's important to the community, and there's gonna be ten things that are important to the community, but we can only do two of them.
And what is actually...
And this year, maybe next year, it's, it's, we do two more, and, and it, that's what I, I just want...
And I think the other thing we have to be careful of when we ask the community is, there are certain things that are not board committees, and board level committees. So, the community is not necessarily aware of what the board's purview is, as opposed to what a district committee is, or a school committee, and I think we have to be very clear about that, because there are certain things that weren't, that's not our purview.
That's, I think that's an important piece of it, too. Because we're, we're talking about a board committee.
This, this goes back to, I mean, this goes back to the fact that Ron has already kinda sussed out for us, what, what he believes the district needs, what can actually be a committee. I, I don't know that we need to override that completely, I think we, you know, give them the three committee choices, let's see what they prioritize, and, and then let's go from there. I don't, I don't really believe we need to have an other option, and, and open up another whole set of conversations about why we can't have a certain committee that, you know, five people voted for. Um, to me, I think that we're just, we're, we're creating more problems than we're gonna solve if we do that. That's my take.
I think the other, um, I mean, it can be left there, I think it might give us some feedback, and perhaps it can be folded into an existing committee that, that exists, or we can talk about it as a whole board, it doesn't need to be a committee necessarily. Um, so I don't have a problem with, you know, the other, I, I always like to hear what people have to say, and, um, you know, and, um, obviously, what, how, how, once we compile the data, what we do with it, you know, we'll have to talk about it once we have the data.
So, do we, do we wanna follow Pete's suggestion, and at least come up with a finite number of committees where we feel we have the capacity to add this year, before the survey goes out? Otherwise...
I, I don't think we need to do that, Jackie, I just think amongst ourselves, we, we need to say, okay, that this is, this is our max. I, I, I mean, and, and when the information comes in, we're gonna take two of them, and it's not because one is more important than the other, it's because these are the max we can do, they're all important.
But, but I think that if, if you're gonna survey the community for information, I think they should at least have, they should be, they should know that we're, we can only, this is our capacity to take stuff.
So, we're adding, so the survey should start with, we're adding two committees this year, what's important to you?
I, I, I think it should, because otherwise, we're giving them false hope that we're gonna add in other stuff, that if we're not gonna do it, they should be aware of that, I think. Other, I, I don't know, maybe I'm, I'm wrong, I don't know.
Honestly, I, okay. I, I, I mean, again, I, we, I think it's been clear, everybody's talked about bandwidth here, and we're limited, so, um, I'm all for two, but anything more than that, I think we're gonna, again, set ourselves up to fail. And, and, yeah, nevermind.
So, why don't I design something, a survey? We can look it over, you, you can give some feedback to it, and we can go from there. I think there's a way to word a survey that gets at everything that you're saying. So, question one, if the board were considering adding a committee for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which would it be? And you provide the committee name and some information about the committee. If the board were to consider, and that's where you put three choices in. If the board were to consider adding a second committee, which would it be? And that's where the other column can go. And maybe that's, uh, so I, those are just kind of initial thoughts and reaction to what I'm hearing, but I'm sure with additional think time, and we may even come up with, gee, can one of the three committees that we're considering fit within one of the other committees that we're thinking of? Does cultural awareness and equity fit within the broader educational vision? Is there room there? I don't know the answer to that question, because the education vision committee means something different to everyone, so as we refine our thinking, can we get to a place where maybe, maybe it's a false question, maybe it is two committees that we're really deciding on, and one can kind of be part of the other? I don't know if these two concepts are mutually exclusive anyway. So, I think that with a little thought time, we can come up with something that gets to what we're really trying to ask, and what we're really trying to learn.
Yeah, um, that, I mean, you raised a good point, right, that the DEI could, could very well be part of the educational vision, um, and I think that's why we need to have a, a scope of what it is we're, we're contemplating. Um, I would also just ask on the survey that, you know, you'd be, I like the way you phrased it, yeah, which one, and why, or comments, so we can make sure that we're understanding what it is the community is thinking about when they hear educational vision, and, and so we can direct the scope of that to the right place. And then, in terms of the other, I, I don't mean, you know, specifically form another committee, but other commentary, other comments that you, that you think the board needs to hear from. I feel like we only hear from the community once a year... I feel like we only hear from the community once a year during elections as to what they want when they pose the questions to the board. So I think that if we could just have that input, and even if it's not something committee-worthy, for lack of a better term, but maybe something that the administration should address, or the board should address, or somebody should address.
I think that's a great idea with comments.
Ron, is there a way to, oh, sorry, Catalina, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I think that's a great idea with the comments.
Yeah, I agree with Lisa, and a way to capture, you know, when I took about a mission statement, but I mean, we would all have a different idea of a mission statement, but to capture what the community's idea, sort of get their input on a mission statement. So maybe if they could prioritize, but we need to know what they're thinking, because when they see a committee, we're all going to have different thoughts. I'd like to get a little more clarification as with, and you outlined it, framed it up very well, but I'd like to see what other people think it's going to be or wish it was going to be.
We can do that.
Just get a little bit of explanation. I like the prioritization, I love that, and then just a little more.
With regard to the mission statement, I'll probably pull back from that, because it's generally one of the first tasks.
I would say with their vision, let's say with their vision of the community. Maybe I should use that word, not mission statement.
Examples of outcomes or deliverables.
But yeah, what their vision of what the committee would look like or should look like, and what they'd like to see.
We can do that.
Yeah, yeah. That'd be great, thank you.
Catalina, did you have anything else?
No.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay, we'll reconvene.
What's the timeline for the survey and getting it back? Go ahead, Pete.
That's what I wanted to ask, is, so today is September 18th. And Ron, from a survey standpoint, can we, I don't pick a date, can we have this done in a week, or two weeks, or a month, or what is the timeframe? So we can come to some?
So I'd love for you to take a look at it to make sure you're happy with it. So part of it would be what timeframe that you all are able to, I can have it, I can have it to you, obviously, this week, it's only Monday, so I can have it to you as soon as Tuesday, to be honest with you.
So we don't have to vote on it, so we can just review it?
It's review, and then it's going out to the community for public review and input. So we can certainly, the timeframe, I'll turn it around quickly, I'll get it out to you quickly.
Okay.
Okay, but with a goal of having committees or not having committees established by November 1st?
So, yeah.
I'm trying to work backwards from a time to say, okay, it's either we're going to, here's where it is, and this is when it starts. And is that enough time to?
Survey closing date will likely be after the next board meeting, which is about two weeks away, because.
Okay, which is the first meeting in October?
Right, so we'll probably be on that first meeting in October, so I think the next time we're going to report out would be at the second meeting in October. We'll have the survey closed, we'll have the results from the survey that are produced, and then that can be reviewed and discussed at the second meeting in October, would be the earliest I would think that you can discuss this next.
So the next meeting in October is October 9th, then it's October, I'm looking at the survey, sorry, October 2nd and the 23rd.
Right.
So if the survey can go out before October 2nd, if we can get results in and at least circulate it via email among the board, so we can be ready to make a decision on the 23rd.
Of course.
Yes.
So 23rd.
That's where I'm saying, okay, and here it is, this is where we are, and then all of you can volunteer for those committees and.
All of you.
All of us, and we can move forward, so we can have some.
Yeah, so the plan will be to make a decision on the 23rd.
Okay.
We could do that.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, we're moving on. Board reports, policy, Cheryl.
Sure. Since our last report, we met on August 29th and September 7th. We were able to review 15 policies. A few of them will be reviewed, will come back for review, as are some of our administrators. They have some more bulk to them as to just what's going on in the room when we meet. So sometimes they take a little bit of more additional homework. So our administrators, sometimes our attorney, take them back and have to revisit them or revisit some of the, some of the information in the policy. So we have a few that are going to be rereviewed and come back to us, and we'll be meeting again on September 21st.
Thank you. Audit, Rashida.
So the audit committee met with the internal auditor, and we are, we just wrapped up the risk assessment document for the year that ended in June, on June 30th, '23. Thank you, Lisa, for your work, it was a lot of work, so thank you. We have the external audit season starting up at the end of the month, early October, and I believe, Lisa, they are coming in October to present to the board. And then we have another audit meeting next week to review a draft of what they have so far. That's all.
When will the risk assessment be sent to the board?
It'll be on the, we just finalized it as of this morning, so it'll be on the October meeting for adoption, but I will send it out tomorrow to the board. We just finalized it today.
Thank you. Okay, fiscal advisory, Mike?
A couple things. So fiscal advisory will meet, has not met this month. We will begin meeting, I would imagine, in October, Lisa, does that coincide with your calendar for the budget process? Okay, so I'll get that on the calendar for an October meeting. I also wanted to bring up the discussion that we had last time about reporting. Maybe this is a good time to do that. So we had discussed having a format for how we report about committees at these sessions, and I volunteered to take a stab at what we thought would be important. So I came up with a few things, I discussed it with Jackie a little bit before this meeting, and I'll kind of just lay out what I thought we should present. We also, I also had asked Yvette to survey other districts about how they handle it. So we got some results from that, it wasn't great, they're kind of all over the map. Some people do it very formally in writing, and others just kind of do what we do, which is, here's what went on. But I thought there should be at least some structure to it. So the things that I came up with were, was a meeting held in the prior month? If so, what was the date? Who was in attendance? I think that's important, we kind of skip over that a little bit, but, you know, who attended the meeting, whether, you know, was the board members and/or other outside, either administrators or other people? What items were discussed? What were some of the key highlights of the meeting? And then are there any recommendations to the board as a result of the meeting? And is there, are there any follow-up items that you'll be looking at at the next meeting? And is there a next meeting date scheduled? That was kind of the basic outline for what items we could cover, we could add, we could take away, we could decide whether that should be written and submitted as part of the minutes, or we just make sure we cover those topics in our verbal discussion. I think from the survey results, it was really mixed as to whether, I'm trying, I think there were only like two, there was like two districts that had a really formal written process. Everybody else had, you know, a verbal, here's the report, and it was captured in the minutes that way, but nothing further than that, so I'm okay anyway, but.
I think all those questions are good ones and should be part of the report. I would shy away from a formal report, especially we're going to add two more committees, just creates another task that we have to do in advance, you know, that's your take in the minutes. When the report gets done, she can jot it down, it'll become part of our minutes, but I like all of the topics that you listed.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think Mike took the template for the audit committee minutes, which I type up, but it covers all of those, so I think those are very good points. And, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
Anybody else? So you want to just disseminate that?
Yeah, I'll type it out as, I mean, I have it in certain format. I'll just prioritize it, distribute it, and get it to Yvette, and then everybody, when we get to this portion of the meeting, try, you know, follow the, follow the steps, and that way we'll have a consistency and some format to it.
Okay. I'm just going to update on steering committee. So like Ron said, we have a meeting every two weeks, we meet again tomorrow. We are still working through the space needs in the district and the priorities. The high school stage floor, I just want people to be aware that as they're working, they're going to be working during the day, it's going to be cordoned off so that the kids are safe, they can't get in there, but they will be using air nailers, so if people hear pop, pop, pops, please don't be afraid. So I just want people, people are getting nervous now, I just think that they should be aware. The last meeting, we did meet with ATURF, which was the company that hopefully will be doing our turf for the football field, and they showed us their options. I want to thank Ron Barrett and a lot of our coaches, CJ was there, Panelise was there, Rich was there, they all had input into it, choosing it, and it was a very productive meeting, so that was good. And as I said, we're meeting again tomorrow.
Can I ask a question about the stage? Will the work on the stage interfere with our fall productions?
Should be done in three weeks.
It should be done, right, in three weeks' time.
Okay.
Yeah, so they'll have a brand-new stage floor to perform on.
And it's going to be a nice one. Our kids deserve what they're getting.
Can I just chime in on that a little bit?
Sure.
So Catalina raised a question earlier about what the steering committee, you know, considers, and I think it's important for people to understand that the list of things that were considered or under consideration is enormous. I mean, there is so much that we would love to be able to do, and what we've been very cognizant of, especially because of the survey, was what are the priorities of the community? And one of the top priorities was the tax-neutral component. So we're really working backwards from that in terms of the fiscal committee that put together the proposal for, you know, what our borrowing power is in order to stay within those parameters. They gave us a workable number, and now we're working to fill the list of items that, you know, how much can we get in under that budget number? Those of you who were involved in the budget process for the bond that we last did, which was, what was it, 13 years ago, something like that? It was a while ago.
It was 18 years ago.
18 years ago, sorry, time flies when you're having fun. What ended up happening with that project was that we were able to get a lot of work done under budget, and we extended out some of those dollars. I'm not saying that's going to happen in this case, but we always keep a list of, these are the things we want to be able to accomplish, and, you know, we'll go out with a certain number and a certain list of projects. It doesn't necessarily mean that the other ones are off the table, but, you know, we're going to get those done at a minimum. Plus, it'll give us some things to look at for our capital projects fund, to be able to say, hey, we can replenish that, and here's some of the projects that didn't get done in the budget. So there's a lot of layers to this, and a lot, a lot of work and thought goes into it. So it's, it's a really long, detailed process that goes into it with input from, you know, it started with the architects, but then the project manager then takes that and says, no, that's not going to work, we're going to save money by doing it this way. So just a lot goes into it, and I want people to be aware that just because something doesn't make the final cut, doesn't mean that there wasn't long, long deliberations about, you know, what needs we have versus the wants.
It's a very difficult decision, too, because, you know, you're having to budget to a number, and you have all these needs, and they're tremendous needs, and, you know, we want to give everybody everything they deserve, and it's a juggling act.
And it's important that you, it starts at the building level, you know, this is, these are inputs from the building administrators that say, here's, here's what's going on in my building, here's what I need.
Yep.
Then it's confirmed by administration and other, you know, outside facilities people. So there's a, there's a lot of levels and layers to this, it's a really complex process. At the end of the day, it's going to come down to, you know, a yes or a no, but it's really much more involved than that. So I just want everybody to kind of get an idea of what goes on behind the scenes.
So to follow up on that, I think you answered my question, but the wish list is created by each building?
Well, it's created by each building, by department, by the facilities department, by the administration.
Do we ask the community what their wish list is?
It's all, well, they did in the survey.
We did a survey for the community and took those responses.
It's, the wish list is also sometimes overridden by what's called our five-years facility plan, which has to be filed with the state, which we have to give a buildings condition survey, so we have to constantly make sure that we are doing the upgrades that the state is looking for us to do based upon those surveys. So there's, there's a lot of pieces that we're constantly monitoring, and just because a building says I need X today, a year down the road, they may need something else. It's a very fluid type of a situation that we're in, nothing is concrete. I mean, Cheryl can tell you, it changes every time we walk in the door. So it's, we try to manage as best we can, but yes, we go down as far down the grassroots as we can find to make sure that we're meeting the needs. All right? Okay. Let's see, can we go to a motion to approve the minutes for the August 28th, 2023 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A policy adoption, a motion to approve the first read and adoption of the following policies, 5100 comprehensive attendance policy and 5150 age of attendance, school admissions and attendance areas, and then we have a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies, 5500 student records, 5710 school safety and educational climate, 8123.1 contagious diseases, and 9130 sexual harassment in the workplace.
So moved. Second. A discussion, so I have a question on 5100. So Section 11 says annual review by the Board of Ed, and the board will review annually building-level student attendance and blah, blah. So is this new, or this was always there, and like, how will this actually be done?
So we have designees who review this on your behalf, so the administration generally reviews the attendance of students. So that's how it's been done historically, is that the designees are fulfilling that task. The policy is annually reviewed by the board.
Okay, so can we just say that the attendance will be reviewed by the board's designee?
So are we pulling this off of the adoption?
Well, if you're in agreement, we can make that amendment.
Yeah, can we adopt, is that what you're saying?
Adopt it with the change?
Adopt it with the change that we'll put forth in the future, that's fine, yeah, that's fine with me, yeah.
For the board or designee, maybe?
Yeah.
Right, so for both of those, so both in that sentence where it says the board, it'll read the board or its designee will annually review, and then the board or its designee may make revisions, is that what we're doing?
No, only the board can revise the policy, right?
Okay, so, so the board or its designee will only be for the first part of that sentence?
That's the way I would interpret it.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't believe we can have a designee change policy, so that has to be done by the board, right?
Right. Are we good?
Yep.
I'm good.
All right, I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Policy deletion, be resolved that the following policy will be deleted from the policy manual because it will be combined into policy 5100 comprehensive attendance policy, this is policy 4760 makeup opportunities.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? First reads, the board will conduct first read on the following policies, 2210 annual organizational meeting, 4321 programs for students with disabilities under IDA, 4524 school libraries, 4531 field trips and excursions, 4770 graduation requirements and participation in graduation ceremony, 9150 anti-fraternization, 9151 antinephatism, I believe the two 9100s are new policies. Did anybody have any questions or comments?
Nope.
I have a couple. The graduation requirements, it says that the students get to choose, and certain programs can choose the year that they want to graduate, which is how it's always been, but then it says that they can choose a second year if they want to graduate. That has not been our practice, our practice has been, in my understanding, our practice has been they choose the year they want to graduate with whatever cohort, and it was only one graduation that they got. So is this something different?
And for students, and I'm happy Cheryl to speak to it, or if you'd like.
Yeah, that's fine.
So there was an amendment of graduation law for certain programs that took it, not graduation law, but the age by which children are able to remain in school, and children in certain programs are allowed to stay in until their 22nd birthday or the school year of their 22nd birthday. of their 22nd birthday. So generally, we have allowed the child to graduate with their ninth grade cohort, the cohort which they entered high school with, or in the second year, and I believe that that was under the advice of council, is that the option is given for both as well.
So it is a change to what our practice has been, because our practice has been that they would choose the one time that they graduated?
Yes, and there aren't many students who would fall under this, this new opportunity that children would have to participate in two ceremonies, but yes, that would be a little bit of a change. I don't know if it's a change in practice, or if it, just the practice has not been exercised by anyone at this point.
No, I was, I was, I've been told it was, they had to choose the year.
Right.
So we're changing, which is fine, I have no problem changing. I just wanted to understand what, why the change, that's all. Okay, and then on the two new policies, the 9100s, there's some formatting stuff where I thought we were changing Board of Education to be the Board in all policies, so can you just review those?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? All right. Personnel, so I'm going to ask for a motion to add an item to the personnel agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Have a motion, be it resolved that the Board hereby suspends employee number 019823 with pay during pendency of a Section 3020A education law proceedings brought against said employee.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have certified personnel appointments, part-time appointments, other compensation, extra duty, teaching stipends, CTA stipends, additions to the substitute list, some corrections, and a removal from the substitute list. We have several resignations. Under classified personnel, we have appointments to civil service, permanent appointments, TA stipends, additions to the substitute list, and removals from the substitute list and two resignations.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Business office, a motion to approve the following transportation agreements for the 2324 school year that are listed below?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A motion to approve the agreement with Westchester Tutoring Company to provide tutoring services to students on home instruction for the 2324 school year?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Special Ed, a motion to arrange the following placements as of September 18, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A motion to approve an outer district student placement for the 2324 school year for the tuition and related services per student as mandated by an IEP. The tuition rate is set by New York State Ed, non-residential tuition rate, and is subject to periodic adjustments.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And a settlement, be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the settlement and release agreement in regard to student ID, alt ID 3309, and be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools be authorized to execute such settlement and release agreement on behalf of the district?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're up to board comments. Pete?
Just one thing, Ron, what Catalina brought up about the modified, we talked about maybe in an October meeting, having Rob come, and just making sure that he prepares kind of the good, the bad, the, everything involved, what it would require, and some preliminary, you know, just general costs and things like that, so we can start having that discussion.
Absolutely.
As we start to build out the budget, and it's going to be important
Yeah.
to let the community know where, where it is and where it sits, so.
So our hope was to present monthly different aspects of the organization. So I think I have October's topic, so on the 23rd, we can certainly present on modified sports.
Catalina? I look forward to hearing that from Mr. Barrett, especially because of the community has reached out to us about this program. I want to thank the YMCA for coming and presenting to us. I have heard nothing but great things about the program and the teachers, and the students really love going there. So that makes me really happy, and I know parents are looking forward to even next year. And the new classes that are being, that are going to start in the fall, the drone classes, I see the pictures of the classrooms, the bowl handsake, that's something that our students can now learn from, so I look forward to the school year. Thank you. Mike?
A couple of things, I think I'm really happy to hear how well the pre-K program has gotten off to such a great start, and thankful for all of our facilities team that put in all the hours that were necessary to make that happen as smoothly as it did. I know it's exciting. I think it's a fantastic use for the building. We've, I don't want to say we've struggled over the years with, with what to do with the building, but there have been a lot of different, you know, things thrown around, and the fact that we had the space available is what makes this program so successful in being allowed to, you know, have as many people as we, as kids as we are in the program. So I think that's terrific. I'd also like to just remind the community, the survey's great, we're going to, we're going to send one out, but, you know, there's, there's opportunities twice a month to come here and share your thoughts with the Board, give us your input, let us know what's important to you. Some people take advantage of that, a lot of people don't. We haven't, we have a website, we have an email address, you know, there's a lot of ways to give us feedback. You don't have to wait necessarily for, for a survey or for us to, to ask. So please, take advantage of that. The more information that we have from the community, the easier, you know, the more better job we can do in, in, you know, addressing the needs and the wants of, of the students and the community members. So that's my two cents on that.
Thank you. Rashmi?
No, I have no comments. I'm glad that yours off to a good start, and we have a lot of the pieces in place, so I'm quite happy that it's a, it's a good start.
Cheryl?
I agree. I think we're off to a great start. I would encourage people to follow us on social media. There's so many things going on right now, although I don't have a child in the district. I'm just really not even out of the district for a couple of months now, but I still continue to follow everything, so I do stay plugged in, and I see all the excitement around sports and theater and music and everything that's going on. I think our faculty has been great about posting, and I think Brian has done a tremendous job of really getting us all out there. I mean, every, I've just seen such a difference in, I just really still feel very involved in the district, just because social media has really kept me abreast of exactly what's going on. So I think it's wonderful, and I would just encourage our faculty to continue because I love seeing what we're doing. So it's, it's really wonderful. So follow us on social media, and, you know, you can definitely stay abreast of all the updates.
Lisa?
Yeah, I echo everything Mike said. Please don't wait for the opportunity of a survey to let us know. Please come visit us at our Board meetings and let us know your thoughts. We really do want to know. We're seven people who are here because, not because it's a high-paying position, but because we really care, and we really want to help out. Dr. Hatter, hats off to you and your team. The school year got off to an amazing start, not a single hiccup. I heard only amazing things about not just the pre-K, but all of the building, so thank you.
Yeah, I, the school year did get off to a great start. I am so thrilled that UPK is working out as well as does. I'm so pleased that we didn't have to do a lottery, that every student that wanted it got in. It's, everything is, I'm just, I'm pleased with the school year, so thank you all very much. And I'm very, very happy that our SROs are in the elementary schools. My understanding is they've really integrated so well, so it's just so nice. I just see the happy pictures with the kids, and so it's, it's exciting. We are up to... Oh, and then we had first responders night at the football game last Thursday night. That was really nice. It was great to, I love that our kids come up and they give the first responders a gift, and it's just, it's always a very nice way to remind ourselves that we have important people in our community that help us all the time, and you have forged such great relationships with them, Ron, so that's so helpful, so thank you. We are up to public comment number two. Mary Jane Killian, thank you for waiting so long. I know it was a long meeting.
Good evening, President Carbone, Board members, Superintendent Hatter. I'm Mary Jane Killian, 33-year resident of Yorktown, parent of a former student, member of Yorktown 100, and a retired teacher. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you. And let me just say, before I start my comments?
There you go.
Okay? Sorry.
Hey, you know it's better.
I also want to congratulate you all for what looks like an incredibly successful rollout of the pre-K program. Very early in my career, I was a pre-K teacher, and unlike what many people thought of it as a play space, it's not. It's a very serious venture, so again, congratulations on taking that on. Okay, so many people do choose to live in Yorktown for its schools. I know we did. First, we chose the schools, then we chose our house. We saw our school district as one committed to excellence and educational leadership. We believe that it's time now for our district to build on this commitment by taking a leadership role in transitioning to clean energy, and here's why. When schools transition to clean energy, this is a signal to the larger community that this is a responsible and ethical way to go for our future. Schools can be a model for the benefits of clean energy for the entire community. Such a move would be inspiring to the students, staff, families, and even to neighboring districts. A transition to clean energy can provide incredible hands-on learning opportunities for your students, everything from the science of clean energy to the technology of solar panels and heat pumps. What an incredible learning experience it would provide for our students, who no doubt need to learn how to live in a sustainable future. One example I read about recently, a small school district in Virginia, during the pandemic, students helped build wireless, on-wheels, solar-powered, mobile wireless stations for students and other community members who needed to work from home. Imagine the pride and confidence that was engendered in these students from that learning experience. I'll close with the equally important need to transition to e-buses, which I spoke about at a Board meeting, I think around a year ago. I know that you've made some initial forays into such a transition, but it remains a necessary component of a clean energy plan, so we hope to see further progress toward this goal very soon. And I'll also leave with you a link to the Green Schools National Network, which describes itself as providing resources, coaching, and partnering opportunities that support the hard work and the hard work of creating healthy, equitable, and sustaining schools. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Larry Killian?
Good evening.
Can you make sure you're speaking into the microphone so we can actually hear you?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Ms. Carbone, President, Members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Hatter, my name is Larry Killian, a member of Yorktown 100. I'm here tonight for the third school year to encourage you to get solar panels, heat pumps, and electric school buses. The scientists were right. Global warming is upon us. We are calling on the Yorktown School District, an institution of exceptional learning and scholarship, and one of the largest users in town of heating oil and diesel fuel and electricity, to make a comprehensive plan to transition to clean energy. My main takeaway from the RWE proposal is that the combination of federal rebates, state incentives, and SED building aid means that we can transition, transition to clean energy with no increase in our taxes and save millions of dollars in the process. Even more perhaps if we do it ourselves without an energy company. The RWE proposal is a great first step. I hope you have taken the time to review our analyses of its strengths and weaknesses. Next, we need multiple estimates for solar and heat pumps for all of our campuses. Those estimates should include estimates for rooftop solar, because that is the cheapest option for making electricity. Some schools have relatively new roofs, and they can just have solar panels. French Hill, for example, needs a new roof. When it's replaced, it can have solar panels. The bottom line is, we have sufficient roof, field, and parking lot space to make enough electricity to cover all of our energy needs, including providing cheap electricity for our electric school buses. We don't have to worry about the grid bringing us our electricity. Hopefully, we will hear plans for how you craft the RFT for the bus contract so that it frontloads the provision of electric school buses. The transition to clean energy is going to take a lot of time and effort. Yorktown 100 and its parent organization, Cure 100, are offering expertise on a volunteer basis to help you in this process. And thank you, Board and staff, for all the hard work you do on behalf of the school community.
Thank you. Bob DiAngelo's?
It's past my bedtime. Thank you for the time to speak here, I appreciate it. Dr. Hatter, it's nice to see you again. Lisa, it's nice to see you. I found, my name, again, Bob DiAngelo's. I'm a retired senior IBM engineering manager, and I formed Yorktown 100 because years ago I started calculating my carbon footprint. How much do I emit from my house and my car, et cetera? And when I saw the numbers, I was pretty disturbed, and I did something about it. I bought a rooftop solar system, hybrid car, heat pump now, and my carbon emissions are going down and down. I felt that running the numbers emphasized personal responsibility. I feel that each one of us has to have that personal responsibility, and that's what my group is all about, to get people to understand what they're doing and to take responsibility for it. We're here to help. I've helped a number of people in town convert to rooftop solar, I've saved them money, heat pumps, that sort of thing, and I'm here to try to help you guys. I'm a little impatient in that we've been talking about the carbon emissions from the Yorktown schools. I've calculated them for you a few years ago, and you may remember, I've given you a graph, and it kind of shows that the largest emission, the big tall thing, is from your heating systems. Right now, the plan we have is to replace light bulbs. We don't have a good plan to do something about the heating systems. You're putting out about 5 million pounds of carbon dioxide a year from your heating systems, so I don't really find it acceptable not to have a plan for that. I would like to ask and think about you adding sections to the building. I hope they're going to be heated with heat pumps. I hope, and if not, I'll help you. You know, it is far cheaper to heat, when you're burning oil, I can guarantee you, depending on the price of oil, it's roughly half the operating cost to go to a heat pump than to burn the oil. So there is a payback. I realize it's not an easy subject, or it's an easy project, but we can't keep waiting. Like Larry said, it's not getting any better. You are starting to see the very tip of what climate change is going to do to us. I believe it. I'm a scientist, I've read every book, I've worked with some brilliant people, and I'm convinced this is a big problem. That's why, as a retired person, I spend lots of time on it. So I would love to help you, I'd love to work with you some more, but I'm very disappointed that we don't have more in tune, focused on reducing the oil emissions from the heat pumps, and I urge you to make sure that any additions you do are heated with heat pumps in a clean fashion. But by the way, I do want to say, from a school viewpoint, I didn't want to forget this, you guys are doing an amazing job, and I come here to talk to you about the environment, but when I see what you're doing, I'm, I'm very impressed, and I wish I still had students here in the school. My kids have graduated, but thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. Susan Buck? Oh, sorry. Paul Moskowitz?
Thank you. My name is Paul Moskowitz. I'm a resident of the Yorktown Central School District, but also in Yorktown, I'm a member of the Town Climate Smart Communities Task Force. What that group is now doing is soliciting bids for the transformation What that group is now doing is soliciting bids for the transformation of Yorktown buildings into energy efficient edifices. That is, can we replace the oil that they burn with solar collectors and heat pumps? We'll find out soon because we're, we're on that track. I think that it would be appropriate for the school district to start looking into this. It doesn't cost you very much to see what it's going to cost to stop burning oil and start using heat pumps and solar arrays to supply your energy. The town of Yorktown is not doing this to save the planet. They couldn't care less. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. The town of Yorktown is not doing this to save the planet, they're doing this to save money and that in itself will help us to reduce carbon emissions because using clean energy will cost less. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron, was there anything you wanted to address or you want to take it under advisement?
No, I think they're great suggestions as we look at the construction and it's part of the RWE proposal. We are looking at what we can do within the scope of the bond, but as Mike referenced a little earlier, the needs, and it's not so much a want list at this point, right now, there's a needs list and priority number one is to take services being delivered to children out of hallways and into classrooms. And the question is, well, once we do that and we meet the enrollment demands because the children are coming, how much money is left to do everything else that we need to do and what are the priorities of those items? So we, we have held on the RWE piece because there's a bond coming up, can we fold some of that work in? And then the other piece in terms of heating, that's a conversation that we'll certainly bring back to the architect and construction manager, we'll look at that.
Absolutely. And I also think that one of our discussions about committees is a sustainability committee and it's, this is part of, part of it. It's, it's an important piece and I think we're trying to say it's important by putting a board level committee in place to be able to have these discussions and philosophies developed so we can find a way to move forward in a responsible manner. We do agree with you. Are we good? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?